Thank you. Would you please read the meeting procedures, please?
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting Tuesday, January 27, 2009. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers and cellphones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. The next item is the public comment. This is a time for anybody who would like to make a comment on any item that is not on our agenda today, please come forward and do so. And we'd ask your name and your address, please.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Jack Sanchez. I live at 3675 Lockton Lane here in Auburn. And I am the volunteer coordinator for SARSIS, Save Auburn Ravine Salmon and Steelhead. And I've had the pleasure of working with several of you and meeting the rest of you or your assistants. And I'm here to simply make a request for a letter of support to SARSIS, for SARSIS. And the goal of SARSIS is to return salmon and steelhead to the entire length of the Auburn ravine by clearing a passageway for fishes and retrofitting or removing barriers, 13 barriers that exist on the Auburn ravine. So my request is a letter of support for SARSIS from the County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. We can't take action on that.
No.
Can we take a suggestion or?
Yes, as you've.
To add to a future agenda?
Yes. We can do that. And what we'd like to have is a letter reflecting exactly what that means from the organization, and that can be agendized for a future board meeting.
That is the board's pleasure. Is it consensus that we do a letter? And for a future agenda?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Jack.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Wes Dicker for Engineering and Surveying Department. Just a brief follow-up for you. On December 9th, your board took action to accept the improvements for Winchester Phase 4A as complete, subject to the completion of some electrical and gas connections. And you delegated to the Director of Engineering Surveying the authority to issue that final acceptance. Happy to tell you that on January 15th, we were able to write that letter. So Winchester Phase 4A is done. The gentleman who had a house that he couldn't get occupancy on should be able to do that. And other building permits are underway under our normal process. The other two phases of Winchester are still incomplete, but we got that one done. And I would like to note that C.C. Myers did assist us greatly, stepped up to the plate and did some work. And the receivers also were cooperative, so we got it done. So we have one homeowner who should be happy and a few others who should be happy soon.
Thank you, Wes, for all your work.
Mr. Chair, if I might further comment, as you appreciated Wes' County Council's office and other members of staff, this is what happens when projects go through bankruptcy. There's homeowners and lot owners that get caught up in the mix of this, and the scrambling of these things requires an extraordinary amount of staff effort. Actually, C.C. Myers did beyond what was required of him, since he is also, he's the one in bankruptcy. But your staff and everybody's pulling together to protect the property owners, the individual property owners who are affected by these very difficult times.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the board?
Good morning. My name is Jocelyn Maddox. I'm with Placer Grown. And I'm here to address the board on an item that's on the consent agenda, item 14A. I understand basically what I'm here to do is.
If I might, if you're requesting that be pulled off the consent calendar, then the board can speak to that. So that's probably what you're really here for, is to speak to the issue?
I'm here to read into the record a letter of support for the agricultural marketing program and the marketing director.
If I might, Ms. Chairman, if you could please wait a few minutes, then we'll pull that item with the pleasure of the board.
And then we'll take your letter.
And then you can talk about that item.
This time here is for any item that's not on the agenda that falls under our purview.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the board? Any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the Supervisor Committee reports.
Mr. Chairman, I figured I'd update the board on the ongoing saga of the Placer Parkway. As the board knows, I've reported back a couple of times about where we are with the Placer Parkway, and that is that we, I represent our board on the South Placer Regional Transportation Authority, Sparta, the joint powers between Roseville, Rockland, Lincoln, and the county, which is the lead agency on this project. We have done all of our environmental review required under Tier 1 to determine which is the appropriate alignment. And all of the objective data shows that Alternative 5 is the preferred alignment, the LEDPA alignment. We've had a series of meetings with various federal agencies. Federal Highways agrees with us. Caltrans, state agency, obviously agrees with us. Unfortunately, we're dealing with EPA, Fish and Wildlife, who's re-engaged the process, having been out of the process now for three years, decided now they want back into the process, and Army Corps. EPA and Army Corps do not believe that Alternative 5, which is a northern alignment, connects with Sutter County Sankey Road. They do not believe that Alternative 5 is the LEDPA, instead preferring Alternative 1, which is the longest alignment and the one that connects down by Riego Road and the interchange down in South Sutter. We had a series of meetings to get ready for our formal elevation meeting with the managers down in San Francisco, to which I drove down on Friday. Had our meeting on Friday, laid out our objective data on both direct impacts and indirect impacts, and were met with responses from EPA of, "We believe Alternative 1 to be less growth-inducing from Fish and Wildlife. We feel that Alternative 1 is less, has less habitat fragmentation." Fish and Wildlife saying, "We're in the position of having to go against statistical data versus our gut and professional opinion." And suffice it to say, we left that meeting without concurrence on a LEDPA, with EPA, Fish and Wildlife, again playing kind of a backbench role because they've just re-engaged, but primarily EPA and Army Corps still not accepting, though they do not dispute any of the data that's in our Tier 1 analysis. They provide no data of their own. They simply say, "Alternative 1, we believe is the LEDPA alternative," as opposed to Alternative 5, which is not only the alternative that our governing board wants, but also the only alternative that Sutter County, based on the Sutter Point EIR, which was circulated in December, Sutter County is only able, by way of their planning, to accept a northern alignment at Sankey Road. And these folks know that, because they're the same folks that are working with Sutter County on their Sutter Point project. They know that. Yet, in spite of that, they continue to insist that Alternative 1, absent any data, absent anything other than feel, that Alternative 1 is their LEDPA. So I agreed to let staff of Sparta meet one more time with staff of these agencies to see if there might be something that can be done to work this out. Otherwise, we at Sparta are going to have to figure out how we continue to move this process forward into the Tier 2 analysis, which is when you actually analyze the direct impacts on the ground within the alignment, proceeded the Tier 2 analysis so that we can keep this process going. So it was a frustrating meeting at best.
Makes me believe that they want to derail it.
I share your sentiment. I don't, I don't get it, but that's where we are, and I look forward to an interesting PCCP meeting this afternoon because it's, well, it's frustrating. I'll just leave it at that.
Well, nothing else, Kirk, we're here for therapy.
Yeah. You should have been with, you should have been with me Friday afternoon. One of the three phone calls I made as I was driving back. I don't think my cellphone was necessary. I think they heard me without the phone as I was driving back.
Well, I'm glad you're the one representing it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Jennifer?
Yeah, we had our first meeting of the, and I'm probably going to get the name wrong, the Economic Development Board, where I'm pleased to announce that Supervisor Weigant was appointed to chair and.
More therapy.
Yeah, more therapy, exactly. Met a number of really great contacts, useful contacts, learned quite a bit for myself about what that committee does, and am very pleased to report that have, since that meeting, had contact from three different individuals in the county who were potentially looking to bring some new businesses into the county. So while the larger economic picture may be a little grim, Placer County is, at least from my perspective, is starting to look a little happier, and just wanted to share that information with the board and the public.
Thank you. Jim?
Nothing? I just have a couple to update the board on is, SAICOG has come out very aggressively to receive if any stimulus funds come from the federal government with this new proposed plan that Barack Obama, our new president, has. And Placer County has many projects on this list that could benefit from that if, if and case that, that happens. And then yesterday, we had the Placer County and the City of Roseville Border Committee meeting, and for the most part, I think, I mean, it went very well. But one of the projects we were updated on was the Sutter Point. And the size of that project is actually bigger than Placer Vineyards, but yet required by, they have less units than Placer Vineyards has now, so, you know, I was kind of surprised to see that. But it became very clear in that presentation that Sankey Road is the only alternative that Sutter County is willing to even entertain. And with a project of the size of the Placer Parkway, we're going to need the cooperation of Sutter County to make that connection, so thank you for your work on that.
Okay. Next item is the consent agenda. And I under, go ahead. We need to pull 16C, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I'd like to pull 16C for separate consideration. I need to remove one individual and continue on the process with another.
And then the other one was 14A? Okay. I'll take a motion on the remaining. So we have a motion in seconds. Do we need a roll call in that, Ann?
Did you make the motion, Jim? Holmes? Weigant? Euler? Montgomery? Rockholm.
Yes. And then we'll take up item 14A? 14A? Yes. Yes. Well, you know, what, before you do your presentation, Christine, do you, would you like to make a presentation on that first, a brief one on the, from your perspective, and then you can, sorry for the confusion.
Good morning. Christine Turner, Placer County Agricultural Commissioner. The item 14A has to do with a request to approve an agreement existing, terminating the existing employment agreement with Nancy Rixey, Nancy Jo Rixey, the Agricultural Marketing Director, effective January 31st. And in its place, to approve a new employment agreement with Nancy Jo Rixey to provide services as Agricultural Marketing Director from February 1st through June 30th, 2009. And it states there what the salaries and benefits for a total of $33,077 in contract costs. The background on this is that, you know, in these budget times, all the departments were given some dollar amount targets to meet for making budget cuts during the remainder of this fiscal year. The analysis in my department was that I couldn't get there any other way than to make some reductions in staffing levels in some program areas. We have eliminated a number of our extra help positions that we have historically relied upon to meet our state contract revenues. Those contract employees are lease expensive in terms of our labor force in my department, and the state contracts have, of course, a finite amount of dollars to them. To meet our revenue projections, we needed to balance keeping a certain number of extra help staff to meet those state revenue contracts and still come up with enough cuts in my department to meet our target goal of $55,000-plus this fiscal year. So with that in mind, we discussed within my department ways to do that, and one of the ways was to reduce the full-time Agricultural Marketing Director's position to three-quarters time for the remainder of the fiscal year. And with that cut and the additional cuts that we made to our extra help staff, we were able to come in with our requested budget cuts. So with that, I'm happy to answer any other additional questions anybody may have and respond to whatever the public comments are.
You might have any questions this time? Thank you.
I have copies of the letter that I'm going to read. Good morning. My name is Jocelyn Maddox. I'm the Program Manager for Placer Grown, a nonprofit agricultural marketing association made up of Placer County agricultural producers, business members, and community members. My family also operates Lone Buffalo Vineyards in Auburn, where my father grows wine grapes and produces local wine. I've been involved with Placer Grown and the Placer County agricultural community for the past five years, and I'm here today on behalf of Placer Grown to address the board regarding this consent item agenda, which is the recommendation to cut back the salary and hours of Nancy Jo Rixey, the Marketing Director for the Agricultural Marketing Program. First, Placer Grown would like to thank the Board of Supervisors, specifically Supervisors Rockholm, Weigant, Holmes, and Euler for their continued support of the annual Placer Grown Food and Farm Conference. The Supervisors have faithfully sponsored the attended, and attended the conference for the past several years and are doing so again this February. Placer Grown is grateful for your continued commitment and support to the growth of agriculture and small farms in Placer County. But why Placer Grown is also here today is to address the board and express our concern for these proposed salary and hours cutbacks of Nancy Jo Rixey's contract as Marketing Director for the Placer County Agricultural Marketing Program. It's our understanding that in order to reduce general funds costs, the position of Agricultural Marketing Director is being reduced to a three-quarter time position for the remainder of the fiscal year. Although we understand that due to anticipated revenue shortfalls, cuts are being made in several programs countywide, the impact of cutting funds previously contracted for the Agricultural Marketing Program have a far-reaching detrimental impact on the citizens of Placer County and the local agricultural community. Placer Grown strongly supports the Agricultural Marketing Program and specifically Ms., excuse me, Ms. Rixey, as our goals and duties are mainly one and the same. Ms. Rixey serves as the advisor for Placer Grown's Board of Directors and collaborates with Placer Grown on local agricultural marketing projects. But Placer Grown is underfunded and made up mostly of, most exclusively of volunteers. We could not do most of what we do without the support of the Agricultural Marketing Program and Ms. Rixey's efforts. Ms. Rixey is more than just good at her job. She is an integral part of the economic viability of agriculture in Placer County. She works tirelessly to improve and create unique economic opportunities for the small farms and ranches of Placer County. She connects the community with local growers, helping to expand their customer base. She connects those growers with local businesses, improving the quality of their products and providing an economic benefit for both the grower and the business. She is the force.
Wrap it up here.
Yeah. She's the force behind many of the publications that promote agriculture in Placer County. And she's, does this because she pulls together teams of diverse people, and her efforts and responsibilities just can't be measured in hours. A cutback of her time and efforts to further the development of Placer County agriculture leaves no one to fill that gap. The budget was already cut by 10%, and a 25% cutback in her hours will limit her ability to attend planning meetings, reduce her accessibility to growers, and will impede her overall chances for success. Ms. Rixey is uniquely qualified to fill the position of the director and to continue to build on the program's success. A cutback of her salary and hours will be hard for growers and hard on Placer Grown.
Thank you. We, I wouldn't disagree with you.
Yeah. And we just wanted to submit our support for the program and just get on the record that it will be her, taking away her hours, you know, that, it's a slippery slope that leads to losing that person altogether, and we, I think the county would be sorely hurt if that happened.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else in the public want to address this? Any one of the board members want to?
Yeah, I'll go ahead, take the lead and move approval of staff's recommendation and just comment that your points are well-taken, but we are living in, I believe, historic economic times. In the county, for us to retain our existing levels of service, we really are going to have to have across the board sharing of the pain, and in fact, have doing a huge amount of work quietly and publicly in that regard. But over the next three years, we expect to make significant cuts to our budget because of revenue shortfalls, and the big elephant in the room for us is not knowing exactly what the state's going to do, but knowing for sure that it looks pretty grim. In addition to that, we actually have been very fortunate in Placer County to even have an ag marketing person. The board has long felt strongly that, under the notion of economic development and specifically a land use planning vision that includes preserving our agricultural way of life and that the people here very much have a thirst for that and have worked closely with us in that mission, we are fortunate to still have that person, and she will, Nancy Jo has been doing a great job and will continue to do so, but it's just simply going to be painful for all of us over the next several years. And my commitment will be to try to make sure we can continue that effort to the fullest extent possible. So with that, I have made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. We take that with just a voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And Nancy Jo, believe me when I say, I support you 100%, and it's going to be like this for the, you know, until this economy picks back up. We don't want to lose you. You've done a great job. You put, you've helped, you're part of the effort to put Placer Grown on the national market, so thank you. Okay, 16.
It has been brought to my attention that one of my reappointments, Martha Vroeg to Seat 5, is actually unable to serve at this time, so I would like to remove her name from this item, but leave Michael Whittle, who is still able to fill out his term.
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, we're talking about 16C, correct?
Yeah, what did I say, 16A?
No, I said 16.
Oh, okay. That kind of covers up. Sorry about that.
Yes, 16C, correct. So I'm not entirely certain if the clerk of the board could direct me on how to frame this super greatly. That was fine. Great.
All right. Roll call in that, or all voice vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay, our next item is a presentation. It's my great honor to be able to make this presentation to a longtime friend, colleague, and a person that I have great respect for, and that's, if former Congressman Doolittle, maybe if you'd step up to the podium for me? Well, I'm going to read this to you, then I'm going to come down there and hopefully we'll be able to take a picture without breaking, on my behalf, I'll break the camera. Not yours, sorry. But I want to read this because this probably doesn't even capture all you, I feel you've done for this county, and I think this, you know, you've done a great job for us. Whereas John T. Doolittle served as a California State Senator from 1980 to 1990, and in 1991 took office as a United States Congressman to serve the 14th Congressional District of California. In 1993, as a result of redistricting, he became the Congressman for the 4th Congressional District, where he has served ever since. Whereas the 4th Congressional District stretches from the eastern Sacramento region to Lake Tahoe on the south and runs up the Sierra Nevada Range to the high desert of Modock County on the Oregon border in the north. It encompasses the entire counties of El Dorado, Lassen, Modock, Nevada, Placer, Plumas, and Sierra County. Additionally, it includes the community of Orangevale and Sacramento County and the Oroville area in Butte County. Whereas throughout his career, Congressman Doolittle has made a significant impact on the development of Placer County through his efforts, funding for major projects such as the Interstate 80 Capacity Improvement Project, the Children's Health Center, Emergency Shelter Construction Project, the Placer Subregional Wastewater Treatment Project, and Public Safety Communication upgrades have been secured. Whereas recognizing the critical significance of maintaining public safety as one of the most important and fundamental roles of government, by securing funding for Phase 1 and Phase 2 of the countywide interoperable radio network project, Congressman Doolittle ensured that law enforcement, fire protection, and local government agencies could work closely together and respond effectively to emergencies and multi-jurisdictional incidents. Whereas Congressman Doolittle has been instrumental in securing federal appropriations for Placer County priority projects totaling more than $100 million, whereas he has provided responsible representation for the people of Placer County and throughout the 4th Congressional District for over 28 years. Whereas on January 2nd, 2009, Congressman Doolittle retired from his long and devoted public service to the American people and looks forward to spending more time with his wife Julie and two children, Courtney and JT, and one grandchild, correct? Two grandkids? You're going to catch me. Now therefore, let it be resolved that on January 27th, 2009, the Placer County Board of Supervisors do hereby honor Congressman John T. Doolittle for his commitment to his constituents and his unwavering policy and financial support throughout his career to secure funding and support the great state of California, and for benefiting residents in Placer County throughout his public service. I think the amazing thing is you look the same as you did in 1990.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board and staff, and ladies and gentlemen. It was always a great honor to represent you in both the State Senate and the Congress. I think we were able to accomplish a number of good things, and sitting here listening to Kirk's story about the Placer County Parkway, I see the business of government still rolls on. I would just remind all of us that seemingly the Highway 65 bypassed both the original one and the new one face similar obstacles. So I guess nothing worthwhile is easily achieved, they say. I'm deeply honored by this resolution. I thank you. And while I did retire from Congress, I do want to know that I'm not just going to sit on the porch. Will be out there doing things and figuring that out right now, but I appreciate this honor and thank you all very much. It was a great pleasure to work with you, and let me put in a plug for that subregional wastewater treatment plant. You folks have a pivotal decision here that will permanently affect the future of the people of this county as to what happens there, and I am very supportive of that. I hope that making lemonade out of lemons, if we're going to spend all these trillions of dollars on economic stimulus, I hope you may figure out how to get some of that here and complete the construction of that plant. Thank you very much.
I could just add one thing, Congressman. I forgot, I was, I should have mentioned this, but you're.
I forgot, I should have mentioned this, but your former aide, Brian Jensen, is here, who is now with PG&E, but I happened to run into him last week and made note that you were going to be here, but he did show up, and I wanted to recognize you for that. Thank you, Brian.
Yes, and thank you, Brian. I appreciate that.
If you'll stand up for a minute, I think they have a few papers I want to waste here. Which one, press first?
Oh, I think it was.
I'll just, first of all, interesting analogy when talking about regional wastewater, talking about making lemonade out of lemons. John, I, over the years, we've had the opportunity to work together on a number of things, both in my first term on the board, this term on the board, and in the private sector capacity. What I've always appreciated most about you was your candor, and I know that there are a lot of people that kind of perceive the right wing in Placer County of marching in lockstep, but there were a number of times where you and I sat on the opposite side of the table and disagreed, and disagreed strongly about things, but you were always honest with your, with how you felt. You were never disagreeable in those disagreements. We simply disagreed on the merits of discussions, and yet you always kept your door open and your mind open. And I think that was very well reflected in the folks that you chose to have around you, the staff that you had here in the district, given the fact that you had positions in leadership and weren't able to return to the district as often as I'm sure you would have liked. You always had staff working for you that were well reflective of your philosophy of hearing opposing points of view, taking input, perhaps from time to time changing your mind, but always keeping the lines of communication open. And it is, it is a style of leadership that I think is well representative of what our founders intended when they created the House of Representatives. I think you did justice to that body and you brought credit to our district, and I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Robert?
John, personal thank you. It's been a real pleasure working with you over the years. We started out together trying to address some issues with the Army Corps on the Lincoln Missile Site, and then transitioned into Regional Seward. But over the years, Conservation Plan helped with us some planning, funding for that, and in a lot of other ways. And again, whereas philosophically, we might have had some different approaches to some of the solutions, you always bent over backwards and tried to find innovative ways to be helpful to us in a way that was acceptable to you. So when we found that common ground, you and your staff were just remarkable to work with. And one time I had the pleasure of introducing you back in Washington DC at an event, and I noted that it was extraordinary, the tenure that you had with your staff. I totaled up the years, and I can't remember what it was, but there were four or five folks who had been with you from the very beginning and over like a 20-year period, so there was something like 80 years' worth of staff tenure that you had in your office at the time I made that announcement. And it's extraordinarily unusual in Congress. It's very, most staffers stick around for a couple of years and then they're gone. So I think that's a credit to you and the mission that you took forward and the philosophical views that you candidly and consistently brought forward. So again, thanks, wish you well, you and your family, look forward to seeing you in the future.
Oh, thank you. Robert, you and Kirk have been kind enough to mention the staff. We had a great staff, and it's a team effort, nothing, you know, I couldn't have done it by myself. It was that staff that was helping me, both in Washington and here, and thank you for acknowledging their role.
Jim? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Doolittle, you were, shortly after my election in 2004, two days later, you were gracious enough to call me at my home, congratulate me. That opened the door for me to be, work with you. I really enjoyed our relationship together. We've done a lot of things in Placer County because of your leadership, and I just want to thank you for being so gracious to me, and we wish you well on your future endeavors.
Thank you, Jim. Enjoyed working with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give your best to your family for us.
I will do that, thank you.
You've got one more before you leave.
That came on the last. I'm not blind, I swear.
Well, as the new kid on the block, I didn't have the opportunity to get to work with you, but I did want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your service and to wish you the very best in whatever ends up on your plate in retirement.
Oh, thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
And I'm glad to meet you, and I know you'll find this work here very fulfilling and important, a key leadership role in moving the interests of the people in this county forward. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, John. Moving right along, it's my great honor to make this presentation also to a friend, former colleague in law enforcement who I had the chance to work with. I could tell some really charming stories about this gentleman, but I won't. But he served Placer County well, so I'm going to read this, and I want you to know, Chow, that it was my great honor to have worked with you on many, many fronts, and I look forward to, you know, to whatever you choose to do. But let me read this to you, if you'll come to the podium, please. In the matter of the resolution commending Lieutenant Chalmers Chow DeCheco for over 33 years of dedicated public service as an employee of Placer County Sheriff's Department. My, how the years go by, don't they? Whereas Lieutenant Chalmers Chow DeCheco is retiring from the Placer, from the County of Placer Sheriff's Department after serving that agency and the citizens of this county for over 33 years. And I was, I'm sorry, I have to get used to doing this. Sheriff Bonner, you should probably come up and stand with Chow while I read this. I don't want to get on your bad side yet.
Hi, boss, how are you?
Whereas Chow's desire to excel led to his promotion through the ranks to that of Lieutenant in 1993. His dedication to the department and the citizens of the community was exemplary. He has worked in various areas within the department, including Auburn Patrol, Corrections, Investigation, and the North Lake Tahoe Substation, whereas he served as Administrative Lieutenant in the Field Operations Division, where he assumed responsibility for several specialized units within the Field Operations Division, including Bike Patrol, the Reserve Program, and the Mounted Unit, of which he is a longstanding member. His dedication to the Mounted Unit, as well as the youth of the community, led to establishing the Ride with Pride program for children, allowing children the opportunity to share his loves, love of horses. Whereas his knowledge of mental health issues related to law enforcement has made him an invaluable resource as liaison to the mental health community. He was instrumental in establishing the CIT Academy for training members of law enforcement in dealing with citizens with mental health challenges. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of the County of Placer, on behalf of the citizens of Placer County, acknowledge with great appreciation Lieutenant Chalmers Chow DeCheco's exceptional service and wish him well in his retirement and future pursuits. Thank you. How about if I stand between you?
You bet.
Why don't you stand between us?
You bet.
Congratulations.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I can, I can. Thank you all for the opportunity, Board. I want to thank William A. Scott, who took a chance on me way back in the early 70s, right out of college, to give me a shot at working for the Sheriff's Department, for Sheriff Donald J. Nunes, who basically began my promotional track as far as going through the department, and especially to this fellow right here, Ed, as I call him Ed all the time, we've been close friends for a number of years, for mentoring me through the professional ranks and making me become a more professional staff officer, and an educator inside and outside the department as well. So taking his lead, I took the best of his qualities, and hopefully they have shown out in the public eye. Law enforcement is a young person's game, and at 60 years of age, the heart says yes, but the legs say we need to take a little bit of a break. So we're going to go ahead and do that, but I want to thank each and every member of the boards that I have worked with in the past and with the public who supported this department through thick and thin. All of the department heads and staff members that I've gone close to. I will miss everyone, but I will still be around, and I thank you so much.
All right. Our next item is the 905 item, the Placer County 4-H All-Stars. Whoever's making that presentation?
Good morning. I'm June Stewart, and I'm the 4-H Program Representative for Placer County. And today I have with me Mark Dornar, one of our All-Star Team for this year, and Mark is going to tell you a little bit about the 4-H Program and how it impacts him, and then I'll give you some updates on the 4-H Program also. Thank you for the time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mark Dornar. I am a Placer County 4-H All-Star. I've been involved with the 4-H Program since 1999. This unfortunately is my last year as a 4-H member youth. So in my years of 4-H, now that I look back, if I never joined 4-H and I've seen what I've done, I've talked to so many people that are not involved with 4-H, I've told them what I've done, and they go, oh my gosh, how can you possibly do all that? I would probably say, I don't know. You know, I just kept on going, and here comes another project, and then go, sure, why not? I'll take a look at it. And then in looking at it, I see that I've done so much in my years of 4-H, my record book is actually bigger than the War and Peace book. So, you know, there's another chapter in my life. But 4-H has brought so much knowledge and fun and pleasure in many ways. As a youth, growing up, going to the projects, you know, oh, this is a lot of fun, I get to learn about chickens now. And then as I get older, okay, I've learned this, what can I do now? But now, I've had many opportunities to actually lead projects. I was certified two years ago to become an archery instructor certified through the state of California. And in teaching archery, I got to see the younger faces below me light up as they start learning how to use the equipment, aiming down the range, and working their way to that bullseye. And so my future goal is to be in a 4-H adult leader, so I could continue spreading that knowledge and seeing the youth face light up in front of me. Also, last year, I had the opportunity from October to March to work at the Lincoln Gun Range and teach gun safety. I was a range safety supervisor. I got to help youth out with their stature, their handling of the firearms, safety, and grading their scores on the range. And that I love so much, that to me was the best thing ever. Because, hey, I got to work with guns, which was really cool. I got to learn how to safely use them, and it gave me another experience in the world to use. So there's so much stuff in 4-H that anyone can learn how to do and share it on with the youth to learn later on in the future for safety. So hopefully those youth in the gun range that I got to help teach won't go down the street and start doing a gunfight just for fun. Hopefully now they have a little bit more common sense, wouldn't you say? So in 4-H, you know, I appreciate everyone that's been involved with 4-H somehow and anyone who supports 4-H. 4-H to me is another way of life and can never stop going on. 4-H is the way of the future. So if we can, June Stewart?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. Mark, I just wanted to make a few comments. Your leadership over the years, ever since I sat on this floor, you've always come and presented, and I've seen your leadership abilities. What are your future plans? Are you planning to go up to college? Are you going to stay local and attend our great Sierra College, maybe?
Yes, I'm planning on Sierra College. There's several courses I would like to take there. First two I actually would like to take is welding and blacksmithing, so maybe teach that in there, in 4-H somewhere, because those are kind of cool. And then maybe end up going to Cal Poly after a few years and get my master's degree, so.
All right. Well, we wish you well. You've been a great example. Important though, you come back to Placer County, though, so we can use your skills.
Oh, I'm definitely coming back here. Yeah.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Mark is in line to be our Junior Camp Director for our summer camp this year. He's been on the Junior Camp staff for many years, and we're looking forward to his input and his leadership in that role. Our US, United States youth are behind in their science and technology, falling behind Japan and China and Germany, and on a worldwide scale. So we in 4-H on a national level, as well as down to our county level, are working on a program called SAT. It is Science, Engineering, and Technology, a way that we can help youth to become, have hands-on, experiential learning, to become interested in these fields of endeavor, so that they will go on to have the skills and the workforce preparation to be leaders in our 21st century. So we're taking our cows and our cooking projects that we've had for over 100 years, and we're adding science, engineering, and technology spin upon that, and coming out with some wonderful, exciting programs for our youth throughout our community. 4-H, H.B. Fuller in Roseville has sponsored a program with our Placer County 4-H and furthering rocketry, the science of rocketry, and digital cameras as a way of interesting our junior and high school age youth in some of the latest technology. And it's really interesting because we have two teams that now have enrolled in our, their goal is to go to the Team America Rocketry Challenge in Virginia. And in order to do that, they have to design a rocket that meets specific needs, and that is that it has to go an altitude of 700, exactly 750 feet, with a total flight duration of 45 seconds, and bring back to earth its payload, which is a raw chicken egg intact. And so they're very busy building and designing these rocketries. We have the wonderful advantage of a teacher at E.V. Kane that specializes in rocketry, and he is working with one of the teams as well as someone else that has another team. And it's exciting to see these youth working and testing off these rockets and trying to meet that goal. And I think this is, this is a big step forward. Another thing we're doing nationally is having a national science experiment to help people to learn more about science applied in their lives. This last year was on hydrogels. They tore open disposable diapers, harvested the polymores in it, and learned about how they absorb moisture, and did experiments with soil, using it in soil, and seeing how much longer that soil retains the moisture and slow release. So it's a wonderful thing. Another thing we do is embryology, and we have done this, I have done it as an outreach program to the schools for almost 19 years now. We now have 105 incubators, and this last year we reached over 6,000 students with this program. In three short weeks, they can see the cycle of life as the baby chick develops and see it hatch and learn and have that compassion for life. And so we're excited about the new opportunities that we have in 4-H to help our youth to further themselves and be ready for that, being leaders in the 21st century. And thank you so much for having us again this year, as we do annually, to do our report to you.
Thank you for your work. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, June, I just have to thank you for your steadfast leadership. I don't know how many years you've been doing this, but there have been tremendous changes in our society, not only in agriculture, but technology and everything, but you still are able to teach the basics to our young people, and that means so much to us and so much to them. So I just have to thank you so much for hanging in there and doing this tremendous job that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate your support. You make it possible for our program. Our program is all volunteer. We have about 250 volunteer adults that work with over 800 members of the 4-H Program. In addition, we have many outreach programs, and without you folks, we couldn't do it. And we really appreciate that. We do, would like to make you honorary volunteer leaders in our program, and we have cards that Mark would like to give to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is, we're just about right on time, is Supervisor Holmes will make a presentation to Annabelle McCord.
Well, it's interesting to note that one lady from Placer County who has served us as 4-H leader is here, and now we have Annabelle McCord, who, over the years, has tirelessly been a leader and a mentor. I can't tell you how many people that she has been a mentor to that served the community of Auburn, and it's my great pleasure to present her with a commendation on her 90th birthday.
Anne, I'll have to put my glasses on for this.
Whereas Marie Pitts-McCord, Annabelle Marie Pitts-McCord started her life's journey in Marcus, Iowa, on January 9, 1919, which was the same year that the National American Women's Suffrage Association, now known as the League of Women Voters, was successful in having state after state ratify the 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution, extending suffrage at long last to women. I put that in there for you.
Thank you. As you should.
Whereas she married her high school sweetheart, Glenn McCord, and they were married in Sacramento's First Methodist Church in 1939, and honeymooned on the Delta King, where they celebrated their 50th anniversary on the restored Delta King. And whereas in the late 1970s, she became involved in local government, where she was elected to the Placer County Charter Commission. You can thank her for some of the charter commission that we have.
Thank me for the charter.
Yes. And was appointed to the City of Auburn Planning Commission and the League of California Cities Environmental Quality Control Committee. And whereas she became a registered parliamentarian, and I've said in one of her classes, I've learned a lot about parliamentarian skills. She used those skills for Seroptimus International of Auburn, Business and Professional Women, the Epsilon Parliamentarian Unit, the Auburn AARP, and Seroptibus Sierra Nevada Region. And whereas Annabelle has received many awards from those organizations and others such as the Auburn Business and Professional Women's Woman of Achievement, Seroptimus Women Helping Women, Woman of Distinction, and honored as Outstanding Woman Citizen in the Community. Whereas more of her many achievements in government have been serving multiple terms as a councilwoman and mayor for the City of Auburn, in addition to the City of Auburn Planning Commission. And whereas Annabelle was recognized by the Auburn Journal as they chose her to be the recipient of the McCann Award given to those who have dedicated their efforts to the Auburn community. And whereas her achievements continued as she was named a Paul Harris Fellow by the Rotary Club of Auburn, a prestigious award for furtherance of better understanding and friend relations among the people of the world. Now therefore let it be known that the Placer County Board of Supervisors takes great joy in honoring Annabelle McCord on her 90th birthday and thanks her for many years of lifelong dedication to the welfare of the citizens of Placer County, leaving a legacy to be enjoyed for generations to come. Congratulations.
I want to thank you for this, for taking the time to do it, and I want you to know that at one time, it was always a pleasure serving with the county committees, including the grand jury, but I served with Kirk years ago when he was just a kid here. And, you know, it's good to see, it's good to see him back, you know, that's just great. But it's always been a pleasure working with the county, and I'm sorry, but I've really dedicated myself to try to get you a raise. As you noticed, I was the only one that would have, that would have their name listed on the ballot even, but I tried, maybe the next time we'll get you a raise. Okay? I want to really thank you very much, this is very kind of you.
Shall we get your young sons? They used to be young. Taylor and Randy McCord, you need to bring them in for this photo.
You know, I have to tell you, my family always supported me very strongly to be in these government positions, because they felt if I had my nose in the government's business, I'd keep it out of theirs.
It didn't work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Right on time. No, we're a few minutes early. Go ahead. All right, our next item is going to be a presentation from probation with Steve Pecore and his staff.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the board. I am Chief Probation Officer Steve Pecore, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity for two of my division managers to give a brief presentation on alternative sentencing programs. Alternative sentencing programs are critical to successful justice system operations. We are very aware of that here in Placer County. In 1995, an inmate lawsuit resulted in a federal court order, which placed a 90% cap on the Placer County jail. This meant that any time the population at the jail hit 90%, inmates had to be released. Over the years, with huge and rapid population growth, the situation became dire. Inmates no longer had to apply for alternative sentencing. There was no incentive for them to do so, no need for them to do so. On many occasions, inmates would appear at the jail for booking, they would be processed, released, with their sentences deemed served. Conditions were such that during fiscal year '07-'08, a total of 95 years, which is over 35,000 days of court ordered jail time, was not served. It pleases me to tell the board this morning and the citizens of our community that this is no longer the case. Thanks to the actions of this board in August 2008, when you approved the involuntary alternative sentencing program resolution, these days are behind us. In this morning's PowerPoint, probation managers Karen Lund and Marshall Hopper will demonstrate that Placer County's offender populations, both juvenile and adult, are now being managed efficiently, and public safety has been greatly enhanced. These interventions are also exceptionally cost-effective. The probation department has a total operating budget of $22.4 million. You will see that in the area of alternative sentencings alone, with some of the measures and cost savings initiatives that have been implemented, we are saving in excess of $6 million. Further, these efforts have the potential to save this county hundreds of million dollars in the coming years. I will now introduce Karen Lund, our Juvenile Services Manager, and start the presentation. Thank you.
There you go. Now see if it'll back up. There you go.
Good morning. I'm Karen Lund, the probation manager of the Juvenile Division. I would like to thank the honorable board for giving us the opportunity to present an overview of the probation department's juvenile alternative sentencing programs. I would like to begin by briefly describing the probation department's juvenile services. They can be broken down into four categories, including our juvenile detention and treatment services, which are comprised of staff who perform investigations to determine whether minors meet detention criteria or are eligible to be released on various types of alternative programs. Our supervision services, which consist of probation officers who, through a combination of office and fieldwork, monitor minors' compliance with court orders and assist the minors in making positive adjustments within the home, school, and the community. Our court services are comprised of court probation officers who conduct investigations, present cases, and make recommendations to assist the court in making judicial decisions regarding disposition of minors. And lastly, our diversion and prevention services, where our probation officers conduct citation hearings on lower-level offenses, conduct traffic hearings, provide services to minors on informal probation, present pure court presentations, and perform diversion Youth who sustain an arrest for law violations in Placer County may be delivered to the juvenile detention facility by one of the law enforcement agencies within the county. Juveniles may be detained while court proceedings are pending or while awaiting a court commitment to another facility. Short-term commitments to the juvenile detention facility can also be ordered as a sanction for misconduct and as a condition of probation. Through June of 2003, all four housing units were operational with a rated maximum capacity of 75. There were a total of three 20-bed housing units and a 15-bed maximum security unit at that time. In July of 2003, a nationwide review of best practices revealed that the length of incarceration, whether at the juvenile detention facility or on alternative sentences, varied according to each case. It was determined that many minors would be better served by being placed on a form of alternative sentencing in conjunction with some custody time. As a result, this allowed for the closure of one of the housing units, and the rated capacity was modified to 55. In 2008, in anticipation of future needs, a plan was devised and executed to add three bunks in the maximum security unit at minimal cost and without incurring additional staffing needs. This enabled the Corrections Standards Authority to approve a rated capacity of 58 without opening the fourth unit. In 2002, when the fourth unit was opened, the average daily population was 57 minors. In 2008, the juvenile detention facility housed an average of 51 minors per day, serving over 18,000 detention days per year. On average, the cost to house a minor at the juvenile detention facility is $240 per day. To open the fourth unit of the juvenile detention facility for the full year 2009-2010, it would cost over $2.8 million. Thus far, we have realized a multi-year cost savings of $8.4 million. This is our booking area at the juvenile detention facility. Our intake staff performed 1,061 intakes in 2008. Through the Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act, funding a full-time social worker was transferred to the juvenile detention facility to provide mental health screenings, crisis intervention, and group treatment to youth housed in the detention facility. Other services are provided through contract with the public and private agencies. These services include anger management, theft education, substance abuse education, conflict resolution, and violence prevention. In addition, programs offered at the juvenile detention facility consist of teaching pro-social skills, adolescent recovery programs for drug treatment, AA and NA meetings, religious services, a horticulture program, and a hygiene program. Per Title 15, the state regulations that set minimum standards for detained minors, minors must receive three hours of physical activity per day. On weekends and holidays, minors must have five hours of physical activity. This is the indoor sports court, where the minors can participate in basketball, volleyball, and other related sports. Education laws apply to minors who are in custody. The Placer County Office of Education operates our school program, and they comply with state education standards and regulations. Through careful assessment and programming by probation staff, we have developed alternatives to secure detention in the form of electronic monitoring program, home supervision, and the Juvenile Work Project. Our juvenile electronic monitoring program became operational in 2007, and its primary goal is to maintain the integrity of the population of the Placer County Juvenile Detention Facility while ensuring public safety. Participants are allowed to attend their own school, community-based counseling, and facilitates families staying together. Currently, we serve approximately 20 minors per day on the program, and in 2008, minors served 7,199 days on our electronic monitoring program. At its revolt, it was not necessary to open the fourth unit at the juvenile detention facility, which would have resulted in a cost of almost $2.8 million. Legally mandated, the home supervision program is a non-secured detention program where the place of detention is the minor's home rather than a secure detention facility. Probation officers make phone contact with minors and their parents and perform in-home visits. During 2008, 241 minors were placed on the home supervision program. If not for this program, these minors would have spent an additional 5,641 days in custody. The Juvenile Work Project provides the juvenile court and the probation department with a productive alternative in the disposition of cases. As a secondary benefit, it reduces the overcrowding of the juvenile detention facility by safely decreasing the number of court commitments of low-risk youthful offenders. The program also teaches and develops work skills, personal responsibility and self-discipline, and permits low-risk youthful offenders the opportunity to provide services and labor to the community and charitable or nonprofit organizations while maintaining their family relationships with school attendance, employment, athletics, and community ties. And finally, the program enables the community to complete projects that otherwise would not have been completed due to a lack of resources. Last year, program participants completed 9,600 hours of community work. Based on the current minimum wage of $8 per hour, the program provided over $76,000 back to the community. The program consists of offenders who are ordered to work, on average, 40 hours or more under the supervision of the probation department. Participants work weekends, school vacations, and during the summer. The Juvenile Work Project program provides services to 17 nonprofit locations in the Although not considered alternative sentencing programs per se, the following are additional services that provide programs to minors that otherwise may have served confinement time if their programs were not available. Additionally, these programs have contributed to reducing recidivism, improving school attendance, and increasing the success rates of minors completing probation. For example, the Juvenile Drug Court Intensive Program combines bimonthly court appearances and frequent interaction with a probation officer under a teen concept. Our intensive service program provides services to sex offenders and other complicated or time-consuming cases. The target juvenile of this program is a minor between the ages of 14 and 60, new to the system, and requiring extra attention. RAFD, Rallying Around Families Together, is a wraparound service program that provides intensive in-home support services to families in Placer County where children are at risk of out-of-home placement or have been put in placement and cannot return home successfully without added extra support. The RAFD program focuses on building upon family and individual strengths to reach successful outcomes. In conclusion, without the electronic monitoring program or Juvenile Work Project, approximately 23 additional bed days would be needed at the juvenile detention facility. I would like to turn over the presentation to Marshall Hopper, the Adult Division Manager.
Good morning, honorable board members. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this presentation this morning. My name is Marshall Hopper, the Adult Services Probation Manager. I would like to start with a brief description of our services provided to the citizens of Placer County. Currently, our adult services consist of adult court, adult supervision, and alternative sentencing. Our adult court unit provides comprehensive pre-sentence investigation reports to the court for sentencing purposes. court for sentencing purposes. Our adult supervision unit supervises approximately thirty-one hundred felony misdemeanor cases granted formal probation in Placer County. Our alternative sentencing unit provides the opportunity for low-level offenders to complete a portion of their sentence on one of our alternative sentencing programs. I would like to focus today's presentation on alternative sentencing. The department's primary forms of alternative sentencing include adult work release, electronic monitoring, adult drug court, and the adult day reporting center. Eligible offenders report to the probation department and apply for alternative sentencing, and if appropriate, serve a portion of their sentence on one of our programs. Most participants pay a $25 application fee along with $20 per day while participating on the program. All applicants participating on the adult work release program must meet the eligibility criteria and be suitable to work in our community. The adult work release program currently has fourteen work sites in our community, and we are continuously looking for new sites. All of our work sites are nonprofit organizations that provide services back to the community. The largest work sites are the Roseville Corporation Yard and Folsom Lake. Last year, the adult work release participants completed over 102,000 hours of work in our community, and the program saved over 13,000 jail bed days. Based on the current jail bed day rates, the program saved over $96,000 per month. In addition, the adult work release program has generated over $267,000 in revenue through the collection of program fees. The total bed day savings cost for the year exceeds $1.1 million. This program clearly demonstrates a total positive financial impact in the amount of $1.4 million to the county. Our electronic monitoring program is another form of alternative sentencing. Participants are required to wear a GPS tracking device 24 hours a day while on the program and adhere to strict program rules. In general, participants remain confined to their home. However, they are allowed to report directly to and from work, attend treatment services and/or religious services while on the program. All participants receive intensive probation supervision, which includes unannounced search of seizure and random drug and alcohol testing. Our current GPS equipment provides probation officers the ability to track and monitor an offender's movement and even how fast they drive. All alerts are transmitted via email, text messages, and voicemail. The current equipment allows for the setting of inclusion zones and exclusion zones. This tool provides the ability to set boundaries for an offender. For example, an exclusion zone could be the victim's residence, a school, a bar. If the offender travels through an exclusion zone, the probation officer is notified. For example, the area outlined right there in orange is an exclusion zone that was set up for demonstration purposes. In this case, the offender is traveling down Highway eighty, goes into the exclusion zone which we set up, and the probation officer is notified. On the other hand, inclusion zones identify a place where the offender should be at any given time. For example, the probation officer could order the offender to attend counseling, AA, NA, and so on, and if that offender was set up with an inclusion zone and failed to report as directed, the probation officer would be immediately notified that they were not at counseling. Last year, over eight hundred offenders participated on our electronic monitoring program, resulting in 15,000 jail bed days saved. The average cost savings per month resulting from the jail bed days saved was over $114,000 per month. In addition, the total bed day cost savings for the year exceeded $1.3 million. This program has generated over $218,000 in revenue through the collection of program fees. Last year, the total positive financial impact for the program exceeded $1.5 million. The Adult Day Reporting Center began operation in April 2004. The ninety-day program includes general education services, drug and alcohol services, and employment services. All program participants report daily, wear a GPS tracking device 24 hours a day, and basically remain at home while not participating in the program. The Adult Day Reporting Center stats reflect that seventy-five percent of the DRC participants successfully complete the program while sixty percent complete the GED program. In addition, sixty-one percent of the participants obtained employment while working in our program. The total bed day cost savings for this program exceeds $455,000. The probation department currently utilizes other forms of alternative sentencing which affect the jail population. For example, our Driving Under the Influence caseload is working on their second grant through the Office of Traffic Safety in the amount of $186,000. Our probation officers participating on this program conduct home visits, work on saturations, and DUI checkpoints. We currently have approximately 170 individuals on our high-risk DUI caseload supported by two full-time probation officers. In the last two years, only three offenders assigned to this caseload have committed another DUI. In fact, the Office of Traffic Safety has acknowledged that our success rates here in Placer County are one of the highest in the state. In addition, the department has also implemented a high-risk sex offender caseload by shifting all mandated registered sex offenders to the high-risk caseload. The probation officers supervising this caseload work directly with the Placer County Sheriff's Department and share an office with their special enforcement team. In November 2007, emergency legislation, Senate Bill 959, passed authorizing offenders to be placed on involuntary alternative sentencing. As a result, Penal Code Section 1203.017 was established. Senate Bill 959 enhances public safety and offender accountability. The key elements of Senate Bill 959 are to ensure that offenders are held accountable by serving their full sentence, reducing or eliminating early releases, and reducing jail overcrowding. In August 2008, the Placer County Board of Supervisors approved and authorized the Correctional Administrator to implement the involuntary alternative sentencing program. Prior to the implementation of this program, the jail exceeded the ninety percent maximum rated capacity for over a decade. Last year, the jail released hundreds of inmates early, resulting in ninety-five years of custody time not served. And during this time, it was not uncommon for inmates to serve only a small portion of their sentence and get released on an early kick. On September 15, 2008, two probation officers were assigned to the Placer County Jail to begin the new program. At the implementation stages of the program, the population was 601 or 93 percent of the maximum rated capacity. So far, over 100 inmates have been redirected to appropriate alternative sentencing programs. Since this program was implemented, the jail population has been as low as 498 and as high as 555. However, regardless, the numbers and the jail population remain well below the ninety percent mark of 581. The probation department has demonstrated the ability to coordinate and establish this new program effectively. Our programs and collaborative efforts with the CEO's office, the Sheriff's Department, and the DA's office have reduced the new jail design proposal by 624 beds. In summary, the current jail population remains below 90 percent, and early releases have nearly been eliminated. The new jail design proposal has been reduced to 360 beds. This has resulted in a potential cost avoidance in the amount of $220 to $250 million based on potential construction costs and five years of staffing. Without our current alternative sentencing programs in place, we would have to house approximately 250 additional inmates in our jail daily. As you can see, the probation department uses a variety of programs as alternatives to custody, which results in a significant cost savings to our county. Our services go beyond our department, positively impacting other county departments and our community as well. I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors, the CEO's office, and our community partners for your continued support, and we look forward to working together in the future. That concludes this morning's presentation, and we'll be happy to address any questions you might have. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, after I took this office, one of the first things I did was tour the probation department, and I was amazed at the kind of cost-cutting that was in effect at that time. And this presentation is tremendous. It's, I'm so glad you brought it forward because the community needs to know what effect the probation department has on our public safety and on our tax dollars. So I really commend you for the leadership that you've done in helping Placer County meet its goals. I do have a question about the juvenile detention. I know you work with the Placer County Office of Education. Do you have any interaction with the school resource officers when they bring somebody into custody, you know, someone that's doing drugs on campus or doing something inappropriate? Do you operate with them?
Not so much in the juvenile detention facility, but in our field services. We're constantly in touch with our school resource officers, and they feel that reciprocal relationship with us in regards to working with us and our kids. So we are always talking about our mutual kids that are such in Chana or Mideu, those kinds of places.
Now, do some of those kids have the bracelets on, the ankle bracelets if they're on probation, they're allowed to go to school?
Yes, actually, that's the benefit of the electronic monitoring program is that they can go to their own schools. They can go to school, of course, at the juvenile detention facility, but when released back into the community, they have that opportunity to go back into their school, maintain those peer relationships, maintain those classes that they're familiar with. So it's a great opportunity for them to be in the school where they would eventually hope to graduate from.
Well, that's the benefit of the school because they get paid by kids in the seats. So it's great. So again, I appreciate your presentation. It's very informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, anybody else?
I just might add, Mr. Chairman, I think that the public, this is a good presentation, but the public needs to understand that the programs, the DUI program, the extra probation officers, is because your board saw fit over the last at least eighteen months, if not longer, to put money specifically back in an investment for these kind of programs. Some of these electronic monitoring were done at county costs because the earlier programs said it had to be voluntary-type program. So without your leadership in terms of investing in these resources to begin with, these cost savings would not have materialized, and it's very clear that you have a very able probation department. It took the resources you gave them and now turned them into very meaningful and trackable results. And so hands off to the probation department and to your board for providing the resources that really show that it is cost-effective to do these things.
Thank you. And then I would just add, I very much appreciate what it is you do in the presentation, very professional, very informative, and, you know, maybe we'll look forward to a report in the near future that continues successes because those are what we need to show, that these programs are having impacts.
Rocky, if I could just, I just also want to thank you for coming down to the city-county dinner last week. One of those efforts that the county undertakes on behalf of all of the citizens, whether you live in any of our cities or not, and I think it was a great education to our city partners for them to understand that particularly in budget times like now, we're all in this together, and what the county does do will affect the lives of all citizens in the county. So it's good to be in that partnership. Thanks.
And we were asking the cities to leave their checks at the door, right?
[laughter]
Anyway, thank you. Now we can move on to department items. Let's take up item number eight, then. Rui's been chomping at the bit. I do want to thank Brad for the phone call last week on fire in Lincoln. I appreciate that. You called me?
Yes, I did, and I left you a message a minute ago. Supervisor White.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rui Cunha. I'm the program manager for Placer County Office of Emergency Services, and I'm joined for this presentation by Fire Chief Brad Harris, as well as Brett Story. Brett will do the information piece of this particular item. The item that's in front of you asks that you pass an ordinance amending the effective date of the hazardous vegetation abatement ordinance, which your board passed October 23, 2007. The amendment would extend the existing ordinance to April 1st, I'm sorry, April 30, 2010. Additionally, this item asks that you receive information on this past year's pilot effort, which Brett Story will be providing that information. You may recall that your board passed this ordinance, one at the request of the Tahoe community, in October of 2007, following a particularly destructive fire year. That year, we saw both the Angora Fire in El Dorado County as well as the Washoe Fire in Placer County, where a number of homes were lost. This particular ordinance is specifically focused on the jurisdictions of North Tahoe Fire Protection District, Alpine Springs, Squaw Valley, as well as North Star Community Services districts. The existing ordinance is scheduled to expire on January 31 this month. This action will extend that ordinance, obviously, if passed, to April 2010. This is a necessary action in order for us to continue the cost-recovery efforts associated with this past year's efforts. Couple of just quick comments, very quickly before I hand this off to Brett to provide some information on this past year's effort. You may recall that the purpose of this ordinance was to extend both county code as well as state law as it relates to defensible space. It is specifically focused on hazardous vegetation, on unimproved parcels adjacent to improved parcels, where that unimproved parcel has the potential to affect the fire safety of a home on an improved parcel. So that's the purpose of the ordinance. That's why you passed this a little over a year ago now. And so what I'd like to do is to provide the board and then take any questions that you might have with some results from this past year's effort. So Brett?
Honorable chairman and board members, Brett Story, Placer County OES. I'm here to provide a little bit of information on how the program went. First of all, as Rui had talked about, the Tahoe area was chosen. We felt like that was the highest fire risk, and then we actually looked at a specific area within Tahoe. We had excellent public, meaning our partners, the Tahoe Conservancy and the U.S. Forest Service, and private participation. Over 94 percent of the lots in one particular area were abated, and actually, from North Star and Squaw Valley, they do a 100 percent abatement, and they didn't see any issues in their area. The homeowners, as I said, participated in full force. As a matter of fact, they did such a good job, they heard of our ordinance, they did such a good job of clearing their homeowner's land that we had severe piles piling up and almost creating a fire danger. We sent some of our Placer County chippers up there to remove the materials within a couple of days, and then it helped out everyone in the situation. And really, it enhanced the fire safety for that total area. And then, as Rui said, the staff is recommending that we extend that pilot program. A little bit about the facts. The one area we decided to choose that was the highest fire-risk area in the region is one-way-in, one-way-out, in the Talmont area, right off of the highway there next to the lake. And we chose one area because we knew we could get private and public participation in there. And what you see there is, all of the yellow is public lots. There's about two Forest Service, which cover the majority of that. And then there are several California Tahoe Conservancy, which are in the yellow, in the internal sections of the lots. And then the gray lots you see are actually the private lots that don't have homes on them. The green lots would be where there are structures. So you can see, everything is kind of sprinkled, intermixed, and of course, the white is the one-way road in and out. And the unique factor we looked at is over $101 million of structural properties are in just this one little place, and it's about 300 acres. So you'll see the costs we, I'll present here quickly, have to be judged against that structural value, and we intend to take that to the insurance industry as well. On the inspection side, we were able to hire former CalFire inspectors through the Tahoe RCD program. We looked at 185 unimproved lots that were inspected the first time around. You can see the breakout between public and private. Ninety-three of those were re-inspected, and the total was 278. And what you see here on the right is there is an existing home where the lot, you can virtually see where the lot line stops. The homeowner has The homeowner has cleared their land back to the brush that's still sitting there, and then that is the lot owner with no structure on it that we were targeting. And majority of these people don't even live in Lake Tahoe, they just own the lot. So that's why we were doing this. On the abatement side, we did, as your board direction was, in the ordinance, we had a hearing body, we had two named citizens with the fire warden. We actually held a hearing. Two people wanted that and both were denied. The property needed to be abated. We went through an RFP process from Jim Bogan's organization. We were able to find four contractors that met all our criteria. We issued, we then bid the 21 lots, the low bidder, which by the way, was a local Tahoe contractor, so we felt good about that as well. Bushwhackers, they ended up clearing 21 lots. And that work, they were, as I said, the low bidder was $12,450. By the way, the high bidder was $50,000. So there was quite a range. And what you see is a typical abated lot, where they threw the chips back on the ground, they left the trees, for the most part, they took dead and dying, and they left a spaced-out manzanita bushes and other things. So it wasn't like they blanked the lot. They adhered to the common sense guidelines by Cal Fire, as well as TRPA and La Honton rules up in Lake Tahoe. Total cost was around $85,000. Of course, you had $50,000 of inspections and administrative costs. There was roughly $12.5 for abatement costs. And then I did a roundabout way of calculating my hours and other staff costs of everything that went into this project, and that was a little over $22,000, including some of Cal Fire's management time. On the recoverable side, again, the abatement theoretically is recoverable. We are also allowed to charge a maximum $500 per parcel in recovery of administrative fees, which is a little over $10,000. So the possibility exists that we could collect back around $22,000, which, again, the idea was to make the 200 original, the original $200,000 in abatement revolving account whole. Now, there's a process that we'll go through to get that. The initial letter that we've sent out to those 21 homeowners was sent in January. The due date back is somewhere February 19th, depending on when they receive theirs, to the end of that week. At that point, should someone pay, they'll be removed from the list and closed. If they don't pay, then we're, per the ordinance, we're required to send out a letter of assessment. That letter is ready to go. We just have to wait to see who pays and who doesn't. There will be a board hearing at your board meeting on March 10th. It's already been scheduled because it has to be in the letter to notify people if they wished to object. At that point, there would be a notice of lien letter, which again, has been created. We must wait till you approve the minutes of that hearing to send that letter out. So there's a slight delay of one board meeting, in which case the payment would go out, the letter would go out in the end of March. The due date for the payments would be the end of April, and we would then be able to walk through the lien to County Auditor Controller's office on or about May 1st, which is before the deadline that the auditor's office would have. That would then go on next year's county tax rolls, where they could pay it as a special assessment. I might add, these dollar figures are between $1,000 and $1,800 total. There is nothing over that. And that would be on their property tax bill, and then it would remain there if they didn't pay it for a year, five years, I believe, and at such time that it would potentially revert to the county owning that land if they didn't pay it. And that is the end of my portion of the presentation. Happy to answer any questions or pass back to Rui or Brett?
Any questions so far? Seeing none, go ahead.
Just a quick note, this action does not have any impact on the general fund. The extension of the existing program ultimately will use the existing revolving fund that you approved in 2007. We'll continue to use that in working with our partners in the Tahoe region to continue this program. So subject any questions that you might have, we'll be prepared to answer them.
Still, Jennifer?
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation, very informative. As you know, because we've had discussions about this, this is a project that I would like to see expanded. My concerns about expanding it at this point have a great deal to do with the economy, but also a great deal to do with making sure that when we do expand this project, it is also at the requests of existing communities, in the same way that the Tahoe community came to us and said, "We need to bring this project." I want to get that same approach from Forest Hill, from Dutch Flat, from Meadow Vista, and also the folks within the other districts. I think it's very, very important to have that community buy-in to this process because it will incur costs for all of us at all levels, whether as private homeowners, at the county level, at the state, and potentially even the federal level. But I think people understand the value of this program. I want to make sure that we continue what we've got going now and look to the future to expand the program. And just again, thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Jim?
I too want to thank you for the presentation. I had a whole list of questions, but your presentation answered them all. So you're very astute as far as my unlearnedness. So I just want to thank you for the presentation. It was very good.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. Keeping us safe. Okay, we got time to...
We have to actionize on the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
Need a motion to...
Need a motion in a second.
...end the ordinance?
You've got a motion in a second. Do I need a roll call or just a voice? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Now, that item will come back on consent on the next board meeting.
That is correct. Okay, next item is number nine. Our CEO, Tom Miller, wants to make a comment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. What I'd like to do is ask the board's indulgence to continue this to our first meeting in March. I've consulted with Supervisor White and the planning department in regards to this, and just ask for an opportunity to bring this back to your board at the first meeting in March.
Do you need a motion on that or anything?
Do we have a date for that? We wouldn't need it as a time cert, just to continue this.
March 10.
Okay.
So I would suggest the board just give direction of bringing it back March 10.
Just give direction.
Right.
Okay. Are you giving direction now? Okay. We got your drift. Thank you.
I'm asking, of course, to have one of the five. It's easy on the humble. Worth the try.
All right, so we'll go to 9B then, huh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will Dickinson, Department of Facility Services. I have the unusual opportunity to provide you with good news today. Usually come here with bad news, but on December 9th, your board made a commitment of general funds to provide matching funds for a sewage treatment project in Sheridan for a grant program. And we have now secured a more favorable grant that will allow us to build a larger and better project for less cost from the local standpoint. And what the department would like to propose is that we take the savings that we achieved by getting this superior grant opportunity and use that money to construct a very much needed additional project in Sheridan. And that would be a project that would address some of our restrictions in our water supply and distribution system. We still have the USDA grant available to us. We've talked to them, talked to the grant administrators. They are favorable towards us making an application for this water project. And basically, we could, for $20,000 less money than we, than your board approved in December, we could have almost $3.1 million worth of project costs completed, and we could very likely move the community off the moratorium that it's been on since the early 80s, I believe, and allow that community to get some new connections, probably up to 70 new connections, and actually move forward with some infill development and probably have a very big impact on the welfare and prosperity of that community. So we would, if your board approves the recommended actions, we expect to be able to do that and proceed forward within probably a one- to two-year period of time, be able to lift that moratorium. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Just want to thank Will and staff for some credible work in Sheridan, side the light of its location and attributes, the notion of being able to build 70 new homes and/or those kinds of improvement equivalents, it'd be just huge. And so this is a tremendous opportunity, and I wish us well luck and all. Staff recommendation.
Before we do that, shall I see if, is there anybody here in the public who wants to address this item? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second, and we need a roll call. And that's taking B, 1 and 2, both we can do. Okay? Roll call.
White. Holmes.
Yes.
Euler. Rockham.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, Will.
Thank you.
Number 10. Can we, number 10A and B. Right? Correct.
Good morning, Chairman Rockham, members of the board. Item 10A is a department request seeking your approval of the continuing receipt of this federal funding source. Over the last 15 years, these dollars have provided a host of mental health and related services to Placer residents in both the adult and children's systems of care. In the most recent year completed, more than 200 families were served. These federal dollars total 728,686, and no county general funds are required. We would seek your approval.
I need one more second. Second.
Item 10B.
Sure. Go ahead, vote. All those in favor of approving this item?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, 10B.
10B is a department seeking your approval of an amendment to an existing contract with Families First Incorporated in order to expand the department's ability to deliver intensive in-home treatment and services to Placer youth. These services effectively assist families to remain intact and prevent institutional care. This allocation is recently released, state funding an amount of $62,000, and also requires no local match. Be happy to take any questions on this.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve item 10B. All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very efficient. Thank you. Let's do 11. We're on a roll. We'll take 11A and B, but separately, I guess.
Members of the board...
Yep, excuse me. Members of the board, Bob Blazer, I'll be taking a lead on this particular item. We have an item for you in this bleak budget picture, is actually good. We're bringing to you news that we've received notification that Prop 42 funds should be coming to us in a restored fashion, and that the Secure Rural Schools program was refunded this year. And so that gives us a combined $2 million to reallocate back into the budgets that the 2008, 2009 Public Works budget. As part of that, I just wanted to let you know, we had canceled several programs in the 2008, 2009 budget. It got so bleak that, in fact, we had intended to, if we did not receive this money, that perhaps we'd have to even ration fuel. So this news of the receipt of this money is actually a great thing. And so we've proposing to appropriate that money back into the budget, as shown and attached, and be happy to answer any questions you might have. We'll move quickly.
And that's on 11A?
11A.
Any questions? Wait a minute, Jennifer?
I did have a question as to where the new rotary snowblower is going to be stationed.
Sheridan.
Kevin, what you answered it?
Never break down.
It'll last longer if it's in there.
Right, right. No, actually, that rotary snowblower is a replacement for a 1972 Norland snowblower that is currently operating in the Sreen Lakes area.
Oh, so it's going to be up to your place. Park it in the driveway and give her responsibility.
Right, yeah, we applied for a grant last year and got partial funding from the Air Pollution Control District, so this allow us to leverage those funds and get some new equipment.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll call? I thought we did.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a second now.
White. Holmes.
Yes.
Euler.
Aye.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Rockham.
Yes. 11B.
11B is similar to 11A in that concerns Prop 1B funding. And as part of the news that we received in early December about the potential, these additional funds coming to us, we need to bring to your board a list of projects in which those monies would be allocated. That's what this does. And we're asking for your approval to approve a budget revision, amending the Public Works budget to show for that. And one thing I'd like to comment about, 11A and 11B, while we've been told that we'll get the additional funds, we want to assure you that we're not planning to spend those monies until we get the cash in the bank. And that the, until the state budget crisis is really resolved, some of these things are still up in the air. So we assure you that we're monitoring that very closely.
Okay. Any questions?
And one other comment on the resolution, please note that the actual title on the resolution page, I believe we informed the board members yesterday that there was an error in the actual title. That dollar amount is incorrect. It should read $1,913,111. The body of the resolution is accurate, so we're just changing the title. And with that note, we would ask your board to approve 11B.
We approve the resolution as modified.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Euler.
Aye.
White.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Montgomery.
Yes.
Rockham.
Yes, thank you. Good work. We will now adjourn.
I would recommend the board take up closed session. We have a 10:30 timed item for the assessor, which is, I think, fairly non-controversial and technical, and shouldn't take a lot of time. Then we're back for 11 o'clock, we might be able to get a fair amount of things done in closed session. The items will be on page four, item 12, some litigation and some labor. Item 12, some litigation and some labor.
Okay.
We started a closed session, we have not concluded. We did take up three litigation matters under item 12. Items one, B, C, and D, all of them are federal civil rights actions which the county and/or name employees of the county have been named in the lawsuit. The county will provide the defense to the county and to the named employees. And the cases have been assigned to the county council's office. That closes this portion of the report, and we will go back into closed session maybe soon.
Okay. We will take up item, the 1030 item, number six, from the assessor's office. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and the Board.
My name is Kevin Howell. I'm an assessment manager with the assessor department. And the item we have before you is to consider establishing a processing fee for qualifying change in ownership exclusions that are not filed within 60 days, the date of the second notice by the assessor. Effective January 1st of this year, the parent-child statute of the Revenue and Taxation Code was amended to allow the Board of Supervisors to authorize a one-time processing fee of no more than $175 to recover the costs incurred by the county assessor due to a failure of the eligible property owner to timely file the claim. The legislature's purpose in establishing this processing fee was not to create an additional tax or an additional fee, but to provide an incentive to the property owner to timely file so that processing time could be saved. Currently, the assessor contacts the property owner twice to let them know of the tax benefits specific to just them. If the property owner either forgets or ignores the contact and subsequently claims the benefit at a much later date after the assessor has reassessed and the tax collector has billed for the property tax increase, the assessor must often reverse the reassessment and annul and correct the regular assessment rule and supplementals. This process also involves the auditor and tax collector at an additional cost to the county. Senator Tom Harmon, who sponsored this legislation, stated that the new law would ensure that individuals benefiting from the additional processing by the assessor and the auditor would be responsible for paying the additional costs. The law provided that the fee should not exceed the assessor's actual and reasonable costs and cannot exceed this $175 amount. The fee is also subject to provisions of the government code which actually direct how to calculate the amount. During the legislative process, we were asked, Placer County was asked, to provide some cost breakdown examples, which I provided to you. The first sheet showed what we considered to be the three most common examples that The most common, the most expensive to the county, and the most expensive to the property taxpayer. So this legislation was intended to benefit both the property owner and the counties administering these. This fee is basically patterned after a longstanding change in ownership penalty process that the state has had where the incentive is to receive a completed change in ownership statement, not to collect a penalty. Upon our first notice to the property owner, we get very little response. But once the penalty is applied and we tell them that there is a specific abatement period available, we get virtually 100% response. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I recommend that you approve this processing fee.
Is there any questions? Don't see any. Is there anybody here in the public that wishes to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and take a motion.
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Very concise. Good job.
Board will return to closed session again to take up items on page four, item 12, if it's a closed session agenda, and return for the 11 o'clock timed item.
Okay, I'll do one more report.
Mr. Minister, county down here.
Go ahead.
Okay, the board will come back into session and we'll have a report by our county council.
The board has returned from closed session. Again, we took up the items on page four, item 12. We had previously reported out about items one, B, C, and D. The board has had a discussion with regards to the Kings Beach litigation. Item 1A gave direction to council. The board has not concluded closed session, but will return to closed session later today to take up item B dealing with labor. That closes this report.
Thank you, Tony. Now we'll take up the 11 o'clock timed item number seven, and I'll turn it over to Jill Paul. Good morning.
Good morning Chairman Rockholm and board members. I'm Jill Paul, I'm the Environmental Health Director, and I'm here to talk today briefly about proposed septic system regulations that are going to be taken on a statewide level if adopted by the State Water Resources Control Board. They're looking to really regulate everything between the mountains, the desert, the ocean, and everything in between. The original legislation was passed in 2000, and it was a good intention behind the legislation that they had. They wanted to protect coastal waters, they wanted to make sure that they protected public health and our environment and didn't impair or degrade groundwater or surface water bodies. Our perspective is, here especially in Placer County, that our local ordinance is good. It undertook a major revision and upgrade back in 2004, and many of the things that are good about the regulations are already included in our ordinance. We feel that the state regulations right now are unnecessary and are also going to be very costly, not only for the citizens but for the county, to implement. The new mandates will affect all new systems and systems that are subject to a major repair with surfacing effluent. All existing systems will be required to do septic tank monitoring of the solids levels every five years and water monitoring of their well, if they have an onsite well, every five years too, and have that information reported to the state. The water quality factors that they're looking for are drinking water standards that are typically looked at for water systems. Also, the systems near Ward Creek, Blackwood Creek, and Lake Tahoe, I mentioned those because those are areas of water bodies that have been determined to be impaired according to the federal 303D legislations. That is our only list right now, and if we had septic systems within 600 feet of those three areas, they would need further consideration to see if they're adding to the impact, the impairment of those water bodies. Right now, those areas are sewered, so we're lucky in that regard, but this list is constantly changing, and as a matter of fact, coming up in April, there's a review of the list at the State Water Board. The proposed regulations exceed the statutory authority. The legislation, again, had good intentions. These regulations have gone leaps and bounds beyond what was intended with those. The regulations are called self-implementing, which really includes no implementation plan is what it is. The homeowners, property owners, will be responsible for recording and keeping the documentation for their septic system monitoring and their well monitoring. They will be required to submit the well monitoring information to the state electronically through whatever lab that they use. I have a feeling that if the legislation is that important, the regulations are that important, that there should be an implementation plan that has some cause and effect and associated with those regulations. These are really unfunded mandates for property owners and local governments. Local governments also have, our facility services has some systems, septic systems, that they oversee, and as these property owners are trying to figure out if they're in compliance, because most people will want to know that their property's in compliance, they'll be coming to the local level and asking us for assistance. So we will have an impact with this. Folks are not, they are not going to go to the State Water Board to try to get assistance. Many of the items on here, we believe, lack scientific basis for the requirements. The water well testing, in only a very rare case would what's going on with your well indicate how your septic system is functioning. There's a variety of other items like that that really are not scientifically based and step above and beyond what the original legislation intended. We also have limited seepage disposal capacity. I anticipate more septic tanks being pumped as this process, as people just figure, well, I'll just have the tank pump to show that I've got it taken care of for the five years. We really, that will strain our existing systems, and we really have limited capacity as it is right now across the state even. This has been an issue that a lot of the municipal wastewater treatment plants have stopped taking seepage. So we have one facility in Placer County, and again, it's pretty limited in its capacity. So they have not considered that impact on the strained disposal capacity for seepage. There's also a lack of funding. There's been no appropriation at the state level for the state oversight that they're going to be doing here. There was talk in the original legislation about trying to make grants available, but those grants are pretty limited, the Prop 50 monies and the state revolving loans. So whether they would really be available for an individual property owner to use and access is a whole nother question. We've done a fair amount of outreach, which is why we have a lovely group here today. We've gone to 10 of the 12 municipal advisory committees. We have two left this week to give the presentation to. We've had news releases by the County Public Information Officer. We've had newspaper coverage in The Bee, the Loomis and Auburn Journals, and the Forest Herald Newspaper also. Our Waste Advisory Committee has also had two meetings and provided input and is in agreement with the comments that, not only what we're hoping the board will present in a letter, but also the technical comments that the division has come up with. We've also been out to PCWA and have gotten support from the presentation that we had there last week. The timeline is, we're here today, January 27th, at the Board of Supervisors, asking for some direction on this. The comment period ends on February 9th. The state believes that they'll be able to respond to those comments in a short period of time by this fall and be able to put out another public comment period for 30 days on the proposed final regulations and final environmental impact report. They'll go through the Office of Administrative Law and a few other regulatory review agencies and hope to have an effective date of January 1 with the implementation date in that July. We've had this out to a variety of people and have gotten a lot of comments to, in many letters and emails. You just got a small sampling in your packet today. We continue to get these, so I'm very encouraged. I think it's important that the public get out there and voice their concerns with this regulation proposal. People have also been contacting our State Water Board and the legislators, and some have even suggested getting ahold of the governor. So with that, what we're asking the board today is to provide written comments on the regulations and the draft EIR to coordinate with our county lobbyists and legislative delegation. On that note, Ted Gaines has a town hall meeting here on Thursday night at 6:30. We're coordinating with them. It's going to be on regional sewer issues, but also on AB 885 and these regulations. We've also got interest from Assemblyman Dan Logue, and we're meeting with him later in the week too. So there is interest out there with our legislative delegation already. We're coordinating with the Regional Council of Rural Counties, which Supervisor Holmes serves on that board. They're a very active group, and I've seen their draft proposal, and it's a very good comment on the documentations that are presented. The board may also have some other actions that they wish to implement today, including up to possibly going to the February 9th meeting and presenting the information themselves. And we will keep you apprised of the updates as this matter moves along. So with that, I'm available for any questions you may have, and I'll leave it at that.
Jennifer.
First of all, Ms. Paul, thank you very much for being the real motivating force behind getting this out into the public. You brought this to my attention and already had the interest of getting it out to the community just to understand the issue facing us. You've done a marvelous job on that. I have to give credit to the MACs as well. They've all done a terrific job on getting the information out to their local communities. I did ask that it be brought to my MACs as an action item because I wanted them to take action and to let us as a board know what was important to their communities. I wanted them to take action in terms of communicating with the Water Board, our legislators, and our governor. So, thank you, and thank you all for coming today. It's very important that we address this issue as a county. I don't even really know where to begin in terms of the regulations. As you say, this was a well-intended piece of legislation. Back when it was originally formulated, it was designed to address issues at the coast. What is being proposed today, and let me reiterate, it is proposed. We still have an opportunity to talk on this here today and on February 9th. But what's being proposed by the board is intrusive, expensive, and unneeded. And I'm not going to grandstand on this because I think we're all generally in agreement here today, speaking for the audience and myself, not my fellow board. But I do intend to go on February 9th to talk to the Water Board. If I'm doing it just as the District 5 representative, I will be doing it as the District 5 representative. I'm hoping that after we take some action here today, that the board can choose to direct me and possibly someone else to go attend that meeting and make our voices heard. Your voices are loud and clear. I will be carrying them to Sacramento, and I encourage you all to come join me. And again, this is just, it's addressing a problem that doesn't exist here in Placer County. As Jill has said, we need to make sure that this gets addressed to the appropriate areas where there are problems, and that is not Placer County. So, thank you all for coming out today.
Thank you, Superintendent. That was well spoken. I couldn't add anything to that. But Ms. Paul had mentioned the coordination with the Regional Council of Rural Counties, which I serve on their executive board. We have a 33-page document that we're going to send to the State Water Resources Control Board. We meet tomorrow, and we will approve that in order to send it to them. And then on Thursday, there's several supervisors from the rural counties, myself being one, will go and talk to our legislature, our Assemblymen and our state senators about this item that is just intrusive and unnecessary. So anyhow, just to let you know that I'll be working the halls of the Assembly and the State Senate on Thursday to get this legislation stopped.
First of all, Placer County, I think, is well represented from a local government standpoint by having Assemblyman Gaines, Assemblyman Logue, and Senator Cox, all being former county supervisors, all of whom have spoken on numerous occasions against unfunded mandates along these lines. So I think at least among our delegation, you'll have a very receptive audience. The action being requested is to authorize the chairman to provide written comments. I will say candidly, I'm a little surprised that we don't actually have those already assembled in our packet. I don't know if you have a separate letter that is assembled, but it wasn't in our packet. I see the analysis of the impacts and some of the fiscal impacts. I'm assuming that will make up more or less the body of the letter. Okay. I think for our sake, and for the sake of those assembled, it might have been helpful to actually have had, at this point, a copy of what we were proposing to actually send, so that these folks knew when we authorized what I think you're requesting of us today, and they would be able to speak specifically to what was being proposed so as to provide their comments about maybe strengthening certain parts of it, which I'm sure some of them might like to do. But other than that, I too am very appreciative of the outreach effort, having gotten around to all the MACs, even some of the more traditionally quote-unquote suburban MACs like Granite Bay, where most of us are on sewer, but I happen to be on septic as well. And so it is absolutely impactful to me directly as well as to my district, and so I do appreciate the outreach effort that you folks engaged.
Robert.
Yeah, I just ditto the comments that have already been made by my colleagues, so I'll try not to be redundant, but I do want to personally thank you, Jill, for the time that you took and excellent outreach that you did, particularly as it relates to my two MACs feedback that we got. Do have one question, and that is, in our comments, have we, we've spoken, of course, and I know that you have concerns about the lack of science behind what is now being proposed to implement the legislation through these new regulations. So do we have that beefed up? In other words, I'm thinking of things like if you have a well-functioning, well-designed septic system that was put in properly and in accordance with proper regulations, strikes me that if you then force that to be converted over to a sand filter system, which requires more maintenance, and the world being what it is, that maintenance isn't implemented properly and rigorously and maybe even not affordable, it seems like you actually might have unintended consequences that make circumstances worse because of these new regulations. So, but I'm not a scientist or biologist, but are we gonna have some backfill of that kind of information or questioning in your comments?
There's the board letter, which is essentially the impact analysis. Good catch. Thank you. There's the board letter, that is, the impact analysis that's been taken out, and then the technical details and review that our department has done is going to go on a separate cover with the division's recommendation. So yes, we have dug into each and every one of those areas that I'm concerned about individually, and talked about, you know, if you have a well constructed, well, there really shouldn't be an impact from that septic system with proper setbacks and construction of the well.
Thanks.
Chairman, I do have one other question.
Okay.
And perhaps a question to Tony. Tony, I suppose I'm not unique in my particular circumstance. When my wife and I bought where we bought, prior to buying, I actually paid a consultant to see if I would be able to add on to my home, add a bedroom or two to my home. Did I have sufficient leach area and repair area that would properly perk and would everything work out? I have a report based on standards as they existed at the time, which still exists today, that says, yes, I could, on my lot, get up to five bedrooms. With these new regulations... With these new regulations, I'm sure that would be in jeopardy because my understanding is it requires more area, both for not only your system per bedroom, but for repair area per bedroom. And so do individual property owners like myself that bought under one set of assumptions that have the rules of the game changed on them, that then suffer an economic loss because of it, or an opportunity loss because of it, do individuals like me have any recourse in something like this?
In theory, you could bring an action against the state for the regulations and the impact. In theory, the best cause of action might be characterized in the nature of a takings case. To date, the Supreme Court, US Supreme Court and the State Supreme Court have limited takings cases in regulation areas to essentially complete taking cases. It's portions or diminution in value or reduced value have not seen success in either the federal or state system for regulatory takings. This is not a personal invasion into the land, which would, if the government came in and took an easement, you could get for that value the easement. When the government regulates and essentially downzones your usage, you have to show a significant burden of diminished value. The state voters have twice discussed that in propositions, have not passed it. And, but, so I think in theory, you could talk about it. I wouldn't counsel that that would be a great opportunity to expand the law right now. I do think that, remember, we're in the environmental review process. Comments on the environmental document, substantively by environmental health, comments by the boards, comments by RC, comments by citizens, will carry great merit in that process. And if there is really a groundswell, and at least in this county, I'm sensing there's a groundswell, a lot of comments have to be responded to by the state staff. And I think they may be burdened to justify some of their conclusions before they actually finalize their environmental document. In terms of litigation, I would predict the best outcome is to study carefully the environmental document when it's adopted and consider something collectively with maybe some other agencies to do that we generally get sued for, not sue as petitioner.
Any other questions?
I would also join, excuse me, join my colleagues, and I think this is a case where Jill, you did an outstanding outreach. I guess what was alarming when we first heard about this is a lot of people were under the perception this was something the county was enacting, and I want to be clear, this is not. This is a state, and we are, it looks like to me, we're united in our opposition to this. It's another case of, if it isn't broken, they don't need to fix it. And what I see the state fix is just unreasonable. They don't know how to fix anything. All they know how to do is break it. But I would be in full support, and I look forward to being able to sign that in the strongest way I could. I don't know if I could write anything stronger than I do, but I could try. Yes. I know everybody is here for, you know, if there's a few, some people that would like to make some comments, I mean, we're all on board with you, so I'm not on a septic system, but this is just too intrusive. It's ridiculous in Placer County. We don't need this.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, before we open up to the public, Jim Durfee with Facility Service, I wanted to emphasize, Jill did a good job of talking about the impacts of septic disposal, but as the person who's responsible for operating our actual public sewer systems, I want to emphasize the risk that these new regulations have for those systems. Illegal dumping of septic really puts our sewer treatment systems at great risk of failure to meet water quality standards. An illegal dump of 500 to 700 gallons of septic into the system at night in a treatment plant, say like Sheridan, would overload the system to a point where we would fail to meet our water quality objectives the next day, and puts all of those systems at great risk of additional penalties. It instantly eats up our treatment capacity when that happens. So I wanted to be sure that your board understood the risk of that. The septic disposal issue, I'm going to speak on behalf, actually, not of the county now, but in my capacity as the Executive Director of the Waste Management Authority. The disposal of the septic is close to problematic statewide. There are very few facilities that process the material. There's very few facilities. The infrastructure doesn't exist to de-water the septic. It creates a very difficult sludge to dispose of, and the proposed state regulations don't speak to that issue at all. So the disposal of the materials at the bottom end of the process is going to be next to problematic for many years while that infrastructure gets put in place. And I believe that the state has grossly underestimated the cost of pumping and disposal because of that lack of infrastructure. Those of us who lived through siting the existing septic drying facility that's out in the Athens area don't look forward to doing that again. These are very odorous operations. They have to be in a place where there is public sewer to connect them to, so it's very difficult to find a compatible location for them. And the cost of the odor control in and of itself is going to be very, very high, and it will impact the tipping fee, the disposal cost that the haulers have to pay. So I believe that the state has actually pretty grossly underestimated the pumping costs that they're presenting as well. So I didn't want to belabor the issue, but those are really significant issues at the downstream end of this. Thank you.
That's kind of a nice twist you put on the end of the downstream. I welcome it up to the public now for some comments, if you'd care to make some comments, those of you that have traveled here. If you'd please give us your name and maybe your address.
Yeah, Ron Blair, Ronald Blair, 311 Roby Drive in Auburn. Came in here to fight the dragon, and I found out that there is none, at least not at this board. But, you know, the comments that there is not enough science to implement these regulations, I think, in fact, the science shows they don't need these regulations because when I read the CSU Chico report, which was put out on behalf of the State Water Board, they mentioned that in the year 2000, there's over 23,000 septic tanks in Placer County alone. Now, I'm assuming that because of Porter Cologne requirements, all the septic tanks in the Tahoe Basin were in fact connected up to a public sewer system, so the water quality problem up there is not being caused by septic tanks. For the remainder of Placer County, in spite of the 23,000 unregulated, if you will, at the state level, because I know the county does regulate septic systems, of the 23,000-plus tanks in Placer County that we've had in the year 2000, in the year 2006, they could not find one impacted water body west of the Crest and the Sierras. So the science is, there is no problem that needs to be solved by these regulations. Now, understanding how these steamrollers go, as far as new regulations go, because I've never found a regulator yet that didn't love new regulations, I would suggest that the two things that the board should keep in mind is, in the draft regulations that the state proposes, they do have a provision for waivers for individual septic system owners. And I would ask that the Board of Supervisors, if these regulations in fact get adopted, that you then request a blanket waiver for all these 23,000-plus septic tanks because they're not near any impacted water bodies because there is no impacted water bodies at this time, or at least in 2006. I have no knowledge there's anything been changed there. So if there's no impacted water body, therefore, there's no septic tanks that need to be changed or repaired or whatever. Just get a blanket waiver under the provisions of the, which I think is in 30,001 per and D through F, they talk about these waivers. And then the second thing is, and again, it's not appropriate today, but maybe in the future, is if you do have an area of septic tanks that has problems, and it's not just one individual tank failing, which happens now and then, I mean, we did have 40 of them in 2001, in whole county, there was 40 repairs needed. But if you do have an area where septic tanks are not appropriate, then the county should look at forming a septic tank maintenance district, as they have in Santa Cruz County and Badaa County, and I believe maybe even Nevada County, where they can actually do this and spread the cost out to take care of the inspection of people's tanks and repairs where needed. So you don't have one homeowner all of a sudden facing a $5,000 or $10,000 or $20,000 bill to replace a septic system. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hey, that's good thing.
Maybe we ought to have him write the letter or part of it?
Good morning. My name is Elgar Stevens. I am a geologist, now retired. I worked as a consultant for many years. In fact, I have worked for both Jim and Robert in that capacity. From the time I was on a farm many, many years ago, up until the present, I have lived in a house that was served by onsite sewage disposal. That includes about five different houses on five different site systems over span of at least 40 years. There has not been a need to do what's called a major repair on any of those systems during any of that period of time. There have been two cases of breaks in the line between the house and the septic tank, and in both cases, I just fixed it. I have twice during this period of time had to call the Rotaruder people to come out. In both of these cases, it was a tampon in the line, and that's usually what the problem is there. In addition to being a user of an onsite disposal system, I have worked doing investigations to locate such systems. Actually, four of those were over 200,000 gallons a day. I have even investigated a particular system that was in operation for 30 years, served a family, had a septic tank that was actually 30 gallons in capacity, but they had a very good leach line system. It worked, and it's still working. The present system at my house has five leach lines. The distribution is such that the flow goes into the first line until or unless that line has a resistance to that flow, in which case then it overflows and goes to the second line and then on down the way. It's been in use for 19 years. Right now, the first line is getting the majority of the flow. There is some flow going into the second line. When I had about 20 people there a couple times at Christmas, we got some flow into the third line. There has never yet been any flow into the fourth or fifth lines, and I've dug them out Based on my experience, I conclude that a properly sited, sized, and designed system --
You could just wrap up, please.
-- does not need inspectors, samplers, or any other fee collectors. Problems only occur when the system was not properly designed and installed in the first place. The groundwatering issue or monitoring issue is really another issue where probably the requirement was written by someone who was not a hydrogeologist and did not really know what he was talking about. As described in the state's proposal, if you have an onsite sewage disposal system and a well that's a mile away, you have to sample that well because it might be impacted by your septic system. It makes no sense. In my case, the two are about 300 feet apart. With the leach lines being about 50 feet lower in elevation than the well, and the direction of groundwater flow is clearly from the well towards the septic system. Again, the requirement to sample that well is nonsense. The other thing about that analysis is that the analytes that they are looking, testing for, do not make scientific sense. There are no specified concentrations. There is no provision for background concentrations of soil for those minerals that are required to be tested for, and the list of analytes is not even complete if you want to give the homeowner information.
Sir, could you please wrap up? There's three minutes is all you really had.
Okay, well, the other things that, if you're going to analyze the water, you should at least look for things like copper, mercury, arsenic, and selenium, because these can be problems, and you might as well tell the homeowner if he has those problems. I also have a real problem with this major repair because I don't know what they even mean by a major repair.
They don't either, so.
Well, if you go out in the backyard and drive a stake in the ground to hole up a tree and puncture that line, as I understand it, you have a major repair and have to replace your entire system. Again, no sense. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Wally Remlin, President of the Leo Placer County Taxpayers. Pardon my voice and my cap. I have a science problem that's just getting over. This proposed regulation on Bill AB 885, or 825, is too honorous, and it's not scientific. It's a scattergun approach at something. They're looking for a target where there's a toxic situation, and it's like shooting a shotgun at a, when you need a accurate thing, a real aim, what the target is. The state hasn't really found in Placer County where there's this disposition of water contamination that people have. And the same thing was happened 15 years ago in our own county. The State Water Board demanded that we get rid of the ponds down near Roseville and have a treatment plant. While I was serving on this county Environmental Health Committee at the time, the county hired a consultant for $150,000 or so to see if they could make the Yogg Road Treatment Plant accept septic. And I read that plan, and then I came up with another idea, which was implemented at the Athens Road Plant. So I'm responsible for the plant that's down in Athens Road. It's been serving the public septic disposal for the last 15 years. It costs the county nothing. It costs the taxpayers nothing, and the septic tank owners only pay a little bit for it when they dump their tank. That's it. And it surprised everybody that instead, because the county, well, county offices at that time said we would have to build an $8 million plant to do it. Well, we didn't have to build any plant. We just had to find out a solution that would work for less ma. So what has happened is, I think the state is under a tunnel vision thing. They're all talking among themselves and not bringing out the outside comments on it and ideas that may solve this problem. I'm going to appear at the February 9 meeting, and I invite the public. Any letters you want to protest or your ideas, send to the league at box 4899, Auburn 95602, 604, I'm sorry, and I'll hand this packet of letters to them as I speak to them. Because I have had experience in this, and I know that the thing, the little piece of equipment that made this thing down on Athens Road work was sitting on the desk of the Director of Public Works in our county at the time. And that was the key to make it work. So I urge you to, in addition to the other things you said you were going to do, pass a resolution today condemning, or suggesting to the State Water Board to rethink and re-go back to the drawing board on this to make it a workable thing for the public in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rick Bloom. I live at 1907 Hawk Hill Lane in Lincoln, and I am a member of the county's wastewater advisory committee and have been on advisory committee and have been on that committee, I think, half of my life at this point, at least it feels that way. I am on that committee as an appointment from the Placer County Association of Realtors, and as such, I'm able to give input as to how these and other regulations will affect property owners, buyers, sellers, investors in real estate. And I just want to say that I, with Placer County Association of Realtors, we want to express our appreciation to the board of supervisors for inviting us as part of the wastewater advisory committee in order to be able to give that input. It's important to be able to have that input before things become regulations so that we can hopefully try to shape things that will make all of us feel better and protect our private property rights. So thank you for that. We, the Placer County Association of Realtors and the California Association of Realtors, have examined these proposed regulations, and basically, we all support staff's recommendation to move with these actions and get rid of these, what, bad rules and regulations and hopefully be able to replace them with something that we need. Thank you very much.
You need to work on the budget.
Hello, my name is Roy West from Forest Hill. I'm not going to repeat, say what I was going to say, because everybody's pretty much covered it. What I do want to do, though, is leave, I've got 51 letters from the citizens of Forest Hill in opposition to this. I'd like to hand that to the board, or, well, actually, a copy for you. And a copy for the board. Basically, what we tried to do is take the initiative to help people to get active. A lot of people aren't going to take the time to write a letter, don't know what to say, don't know what the exact issues are, but they want to get on board, so that's what we've tried to do. And I'd like to thank Supervisor Montgomery for making that an action item in our last MAC meeting in the beginning of this month. Even though it wasn't originally sent to us as an action item, we believed that it was a situation where the MACs needed to have the opportunity to reflect the voice of the community. And as I told you last time I was here, there was 85 people at our meeting there, and I understand one of the other MACs had 120 people show up. So people are pretty, you know, interested in this subject, but I'd like to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Gary Mappa, 350 Cuckoo Court, Applegate. Thanks to the board for being supportive of our opposition to 885, but I'm mainly here to address the public. You folks all came out to support opposition. It doesn't stop here. Don't rely on just the supervisors. Each one of you need to make your own opposition statement to water quality control. Don't make this trip here a wasted trip. You need to respond.
Thank you.
My name is Duane Frank. I live in Forest Hill. Lady and gentlemen, thank you for your support on the concern for the proposed regulations by the state water quality control board. I'm going to have to revise my comments because I see there is a lot of support and concern. And I think that Gary's point about, this is just one step for all of us. It would have been helpful were we to know what the Jill's and her department's comments were going to be and what you're going to be asked, so they would could wholeheartedly endorse or say portions or whatever is. So not knowing, I will just have the faith that it's going to follow the outline that you presented and the questions that have been asked, and I would endorse the county's position. I think the county does a good job. I think you supervisors have to be proud of your staff. A couple of questions in my mind. If the legislature makes a mistake and enacts a piece of poor legislation, can it be just voided? Could this environmental process that the board is going through, state water quality control board, find that the legislation duplicates already existing rules and regulations which adequately protect water quality? Could it just be voided as a finding, as an alternative? And if that's possible, could that be one of our recommendations to go forward from here? Or is that a recommendation that we, the public, can bring forward to the state water quality control board on the ninth? The other question that I have would go along this, it seems like everybody has sort of accepted the notion that you have to have a set of regulations. Could they find that through existing rules, laws that are there today, that water quality is adequately protected, and that what the states' counties have accomplished and the state cities have accomplished in terms of sewage, septic tank disposal, is a functioning, workable system? I'm an older guy. All my life, I have been with septic systems, septic tanks, and the only time we had any problem was when a guy was doing some plowing for my father, he plowed in the wrong spot, and they ran over the septic tank, and we had to repair them. Other than that, they work well, particularly if people know what to do, how to do. You have some excellent guidelines, so I would urge you to take, and let us know, could this law just be aborted? Could there be a way and an alternative finding that the existing regulations are? Supervisor Rockholm, I agree with you. If it isn't broken, we don't need to fix it. So could we just make a finding that these are unnecessary? Thank you for your comments.
Go ahead, you want to?
So, in response to the last inquiry, the state water board will not be in a position to void or alter state law. The legislation was passed in the year 2000. It requires regulations, and until the legislation is amended by the state legislature, at some point in time, regulations will be implemented. What the water board and state staff have before them is an opportunity to perhaps revisit the state legislation that empowered this process and see if they're close enough to center or whether they've gotten up base. And I think there's some suggestion in a lot of people's mind that that's an honest question that's pending, is how far has this regulation gone from the beginning of the legis, I mean, the regulations? So the process will not void anything the state legislature has done. As several supervisors have indicated, they will be visiting and encourage people to visit your legislative representatives. The state legislature doesn't seem to get much done, from my observation, but, you know, this is something maybe they can visit and work on. But I actually just want to remind people that perhaps, having lived in regulations for so many years, this is an ongoing process. In the hearing, in the comments on the draft environmental impact report, is not the last chance you have to say anything. You need to stay engaged, stay aware. The county and the county staff, clearly with the direction I've heard from the board of supervisors, will stay engaged and stay aware and work cooperatively, because things will turn. My prediction is that the state will modify or do something with the regulations. Maybe I'm wrong. And you got to stay engaged, stay aware, keep commenting. And the final letters are the critical letters, are the letters that go out at the end of the process, just before there's adoption of the rules. And we have a lot of weeks and months ahead of us to refine our arguments and collectively get ourselves together. And so, no, we can't void it, but I think cooperatively, we can work together. And I think as soon as a letter is produced for the board of supervisors, the chairman's signature, we certainly will put it on our webpage for everybody to see and comment. But remember, it's not the last comment. It is actually, at this stage, the beginning of the next level of comments.
Thank you, Tony. Okay. Thank everybody for coming here today. We will, in the strongest sense we can, support what I know your wishes are and what we think is wrong, and we will try to keep everybody informed to the best of our ability. The MACs is a good source of disseminating this information. It'll be on the Placer County website, so anybody has any questions, call one of us, call one of the supervisors or the aides, and we'll try to keep you updated the best we can.
Mr. Chairman, I believe this is an action item.
Okay.
I'd like to move at this time that we authorize items 1 through 4 under item 7. And we ask, thank you for turning my mic on, and we ask that the staff come back to provide us updates as appropriate on this issue.
Second. Okay.
Is it items 1 through 5 or 1 through 4?
Well, she referenced item 5 by specifically requesting staff to come back and provide the updates.
Okay. Do we need a roll call, or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passed. Thank you. We will now adjourn to closed session. How you doing? Were you living out in the county now?
We're out.[1776.13]